Good evening, everybody. It's July 12th, Wednesday, 2023, regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank everyone for coming tonight. Can we have the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, please?
As we gather this evening, grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of understanding in its sweet way. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Rossdeck.
Present.
Vice Mayor Kerr.
Here.
Commissioner Taglerini.
Here.
Commissioner McGeehan.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks.
Here.
All were present.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. We have anything we need to move around?
Not from staff's perspective.
All right. Next up then will be proclamations. Jay, if you'd come up, please.
We have a proclamation, Parks and Recreation Month, July 2023. Whereas parks and recreation are an integral part of communities throughout this country, and whereas parks and recreation promote health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas parks and recreation promote time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's, and whereas parks and recreation encourage physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas parks and recreation are a leading provider of healthy meals, nutritional services, and education, and whereas parks and recreation programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development, and whereas parks and recreation increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and recreation are essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the City of Madeira Beach, Florida recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreational sources. And now therefore, I, James Rossdeck, Mayor of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, proclaim the month of July as Park and Recreation Month in Madeira Beach, Florida, and encourage everyone to recognize this day, proclaim this 12th day of July 2023. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Okay, next up is presentations. We have an update on John's past dredging aptim presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Robin Gomez, Madeira Beach City Manager. I have, we have with us tonight Nicole Sharp, representative from our contracted firm that Pinellas County also utilizes for coastal management, specifically environmental consulting services. We are in the, I would like to call it toward the end of the process to begin to dredge John's pass. However, I think Nicole's going to give us an update where we are, what the process has been. It is a lengthy process mainly because we are required to obtain multiple permits from multiple state and federal agencies, plus numerous, and I think Nicole can better define numerous partner or federal regulatory partner agencies that have multiple requirements whenever you're proposing to dredge a particular waterway. I think as everybody is aware, we did receive $1.556 million from the state of Florida last year for this, to dredge a certain area approximately beneath and to the east of the bridge between Madeira Beach and Treasure Island. It is adjacent to a federal navigable waterway, therefore why what I just mentioned a moment ago is a lengthy process to eventually receive the applicable permits to be able to dredge or remove a considerable amount of sand from that area. And then, of course, it has to be either hauled away or placed in a particular area, which is also part of the entire permitting and process. But Nicole, if you could come up and just provide an overview of where we are.
Hey, thank you, Robin. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here this evening and update you on the John's Pass project. We do realize this is a critical project for your community, noting that you have experienced increase in filling in the channel since the late 1990s with it being exacerbated with the bridge rehabilitation that did occur in about 2010 or so. So right now, we are working in the permitting process. And as Robin mentioned, it's not an easy permitting process because you have a bridge right in the middle of the channel, and that requires us to get a right-of-way permit before we can even apply for state and federal permits, because we have to make sure the FDOT is okay with our dredge plan. So right now, we are coordinating with the Florida Department of Transportation in order to get them comfortable with what we're proposing to do near their infrastructure. So as they just put a lot of money in the bridge in 2010, they want to make sure that their interests are protected. So we recently received a request for additional information from them in early June, and there were a few comments that aren't of major concern. They're like, wanted to know where our staging areas for construction equipment is going to be. So that's typically something we put later in the process in the construction plans, but that's an easy one that we can work with Robin on, also a pedestrian safety plan. They want to make sure people can go under the bridge or utilize the area during the project's construction. So again, that's relatively easy. The more complicated questions that they're asking is our dredge plan around the pilings and the footers that are, have been recently installed with the new bridge. So we're working with them to propose a protective buffer around those pilings so the dredge contractor won't come in and accidentally hit them with their cutter head dredge or hit them with their backhoe if they're doing it via mechanical dredging. So we're just making sure that there are no impacts to the DOT from construction or from dredging of the project. Also, they're really liking to understand the barge positioning, and that's pretty much down to a science. You know, we've been doing dredging here in Florida for many, many years, so we know how to anchor a barge in a navigable waterway and making sure there's no impacts to either the infrastructure that it's adjacent to or any boats or commercial vessels that will be utilizing the area. Also, looking for a severe weather plan as you're going to have heavy dredge equipment out there. We want to make sure, you know, say a hurricane rolls through, that everything's safe. So that's typically something we require as a notice-to proceed item from the contractor, but we can utilize our industry experience and implement, develop a plan that the DOT will buy in on. The next item is we found out that there is an outfall buried right where all the sand is. So we had to work with the DOT to find those plans. They found them for us about a week and a half ago or so. So right now, we're trying to figure out, okay, where's the outfall? How can we modify the dredge template or maybe put protective measures in place so that outfall will not experience any inflow or infill during the dredging of the project? And I think that's the, between the pilings and the outfall are the more complicated questions in the RFI, but you know, they're not too complicated. With working from the DOT, we've done this up in Long Bow Key. You provide them some options. All right, here's one, option A, option B, option C. And they tell you, well, I really don't like C. Well, okay, we'll come back with A and B, and this is the, the two ways we'll put it in your specifications for the contractor to build the project. So it's going to be a collaborative process now with the DOT. We have a project manager there that's very responsive, has been finding all the information for us, so that's been really great. Also, as we were initiating the permitting process, we had pre-application meetings. And during these pre-application meetings, both the state resource agencies and the federal resource agencies inquired, well, are there any seagrasses within the area? We call it submerged aquatic vegetation, SAV. So I'm not sure if, Robin mentioned that to you, but we had to go out during seagrass growing season and look if there were any seagrasses there. So seagrass growing season unfortunately is a small portion of the year, but the great part of the unfortunately is it starts in June. So we were just out there and we took one of the NOAA Fisheries staff with us. He requested during the meeting if he could be present. So we had him out there, and we did identify a few sprigs of seagrass out there, but the good news is, he said, it's just a few sprigs here and there. It's under the pilings, it's very high current environment, that they're not going to require any mitigation for it. So we did confirm about three times on site, no mitigation required. So that's good news. So there are no natural resources that are really going to tie up the permitting process. So now we just need to get the right-of-way permit application through the DOT, and then we can finalize our permit applications with both the Corps of Engineers and the State Department of Environmental Protection. So the state DEP is a relatively quick and painless process. The Corps of Engineers, they've been taking slightly longer than the DEP to issue permits, but if you have, you know, a lobbyist or something that can assist us along the way, a little push, you know, from legislative folks that always helps keep things moving along, so it doesn't sit on someone's desk too long. But that's essentially where we stand with the project, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
If I may add, Mayor and Commissioner, quickly, we do have, from Linda Chaney's office, has been very helpful with DOT and in the, I believe, the mayor, vice mayor, you attended the Big C meeting last month where the discussions were on the sand and the re-nourishment, and discussions held regarding reaching out to the Corps, the U.S. Army Corps. So we're doing the same, just as the Big C, the members of the Big C, except us, for the re-nourishment, we're reaching out to the Army Corps for this project and for the groynes repair project as well, because we have two permits going through at the same time. So we're speaking with our state and our federal representatives to help us with the Corps, just as you heard at that Big C meeting, how to reach out. So in essence, there are three fairly sizable projects at the same time from the same county, from the same part of the county, trying to communicate with the, or get these permits through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers.
So there is, you can't really put out a schedule until all the permitting is done, but if there's any, I guess there's no real feel for that? Is it six weeks out, six months out?
So for the DOT permit, I think we're in the final stages of that. I believe, you know, it might be another three to four weeks to get them all the information that they need and their review, and they can turn around the permit pretty quickly. The DEP, once they have all their information, it's a relatively straightforward permit, and we have all the agencies on board, so that can take maybe three to six months. The Corps of Engineers is the more tricky permit to identify if you have a very proactive permit processor, which during our pre-application meeting, she was very on top of things, committed to helping us move this thing along as quickly as possible. That could be more in the range of six to 12 months with the Corps of Engineers. But the plus side is we already have the federal commenting agencies aware of what's out there, that there are no natural resources, there are really no environmental concerns with the project, and it's a very straightforward project that's done all the time in Florida. So I'm hoping the fact that we had NOAA Fisheries out there, that that will help in their commenting period, because most of the time they get a new permit application, oh, I've never been to the site, I don't know what's out there. You know, they might require additional investigations. So we were very upfront with them, bringing them out, having them in with our investigations, trying to let us know any concerns upfront, so we wouldn't be surprised. So it's with our hope that having NOAA Fisheries be a partner in the process, not just a commenting agency, that we can get the permit in a little bit more expedited fashion than we've been seeing with some of the Corps applications taking up to 12 months.
Okay, because I'm, I'm understanding that it's impacting business.
Mm-hmm. Yes, yes.
Significantly.
We, we do realize the sholing up against, you know, the, the commercial docks and everything, that does impact it greatly. So helping portray that the financial impacts to the community, there's an economic impact, does help us too. So, and also there is funding attached to it. We're relaying all that to the permitting agencies when we ping them and, you know, ask them any questions. So it's other considerations that we, we provide during the permitting process also.
Okay, it could easily be six months out before we, any dredging starts.
Correct.
Easy.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then Nicole related to that, because I just had this question from actually a business owner on the boardwalk, is they were asking, what is the estimated time of the actual dredging? So once we have all the permits, I think we discussed that a few months ago.
Once we actually get the permits, they're underway with dredging, it shouldn't be too long of a period, depending on if it's going to be hydraulic or mechanical dredging. It could range from anywhere between 30 to 45 days to complete. And it's not around-the-clock operations, they'll probably be working from sunrise to sunset and, you know, making sure that during the evening, you know, the channel's open and there's no hazards to navigation, but is a relatively minimal disturbance during the construction process.
So we spend a year to 18 months for work that will take 30, approximately 30 to 45 days, just so everyone is aware. So next time somebody says that they're building, I'm just, I won't go there.
I, before I ask the question, I understand you can't answer, but I'm going to put it out there anyway. You're going through all the engineering and with all the different agencies. Once it's approved, which we expect it will be approved and goes out to bid and the dredging's done, is there any monitoring process that will be able to show us we're getting right back into the same spot so that once we do get back into that same spot, we at least are not behind the, behind the ball?
Yes, and that's a great question, I'm glad you asked it. So there will be monitoring associated with the project through permits, and it's a very basic hydrographic survey just to see how the channel may be infilling from sediment coming around the groin structure. So in addition to that monitoring, you'll also have maintenance on your permit. So not only is it, we can go and dredge this time, but we're going to request a maintenance event. So most of the permits that we're seeing being issued by the DEP and the federal government nowadays are 15 years. So once you go through this effort, you're going to have this permit for some time. So it's not, hey, we went through this effort for one event, that once you monitor and determine what type of interval it seems to be falling out on, it could be three years, it could be four years, then you can plan that proactively during the 15-year permit duration, and then when your permits are getting to about that 14-year mark, you know, okay, it's time to reapply for these permits so we can keep this maintenance, maintenance program running.
That's great news. Is, are you under contract to provide that maintenance, or will someone be under contract to provide that maintenance, provide that monitoring?
We are able to provide that monitoring if needed. Our contract's just through the pre-construction phase, but you know, we can perform the monitoring if the city needs it. So we have a survey department on staff that they do this all the time. They're out on the beaches of Pinellas doing the annual monitorings too, so we're very familiar with the area. And we did a design survey before we were able to start the permitting process also.
Perfect, that's great news, thank you.
Do we have any public comment on this? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next up is public comment for any items that aren't on the agenda, and I'll start that ball rolling. I did speak with the city attorney just to get his opinion, and the one thing that I'm going to implement starting tonight is with all of the agenda items, I would like to have citizen comment before the commissioners' comment. That way, we can think-tank all of your comments, and I think it's a smarter way to go that we will accept citizen comment first. So with that said, we're going to do public comment on anything that is not on the agenda. Please come up and talk to us. Try to limit what you have to say to five minutes.
Oh, boy, five minutes, okay.
Please?
Yeah, Jerry Cantrell, 13322, First Street East. Thank you guys for the appointment to the Civil Service Commission. I think we're doing positive things, and I think it's going to go really well. We got a great collaboration started, so I'm coming to you because there's a thing that I'm concerned about, and I want to address it and find out your feedback. So during the meeting on May 30th, the Civil Service Commission meeting, Vice Chair Ponti recommended that I go through the whole personnel policy, right, ordinance 2023-06, which is our rules, and some other things, and communicate with attorney, the labor attorney regarding these documents and get his feedback. The reasoning being is that they've spent over a year going through these documents. I just started May 30th, all right, that was the first meeting. So they wanted to get me caught up so it didn't interfere with the moving and the progression of the meeting. So give you a little background on that. So it was Commissioner, I'm sorry, it was Vice Chair Ponti that recommended that I go and get this advice, all right? And as a commission, it was like, yes, do this. So I'm going to use some terms when I speak, and I want everybody to understand, because the only person I spoke to is the attorney directly. There are two other people that were involved in this, and I haven't discussed it with them. So I'm going to say city administration, and please note, I'm saying that specifically not to single anyone out, because it's more people than I want to say, because it's not fair to state their names without talking to them, all right? The, so after we finished the meeting, on May 30th, I sent an email from, of my review of personnel policies directly to the labor attorney. On June 1st, I realized there's something else I needed to get, so I needed an opinion based on something we discussed, so I sent another email, and that was different, and it was clear that it was different. I didn't get a response back by June 5th, so I followed up on both emails. I was waiting for a while to get a communication on that, I didn't get a communication. So within that week of, of June 5th, I made a phone call to our ex-officio secretary, and I was asked, what do I do, what's the next step? I talked to some Board of Commissioner people, and I asked, what, what do you think is going on? And I was told to wait. I was, it's okay, just wait, because it can take a while to get, to get the response. So on July 3rd, I still hadn't received a response, so I actually sent out an email, and that again, two more emails. So altogether, there were six emails, and I never got a response, all right? So during the meeting yesterday, all right, a discussion occurred regarding the delay in my submitting my, my documentation. They wanted it two weeks early. I was ready to send it in, but I couldn't because I didn't get a response, and that was requested of me. I explained that. The attorney stated that the city's administration had decided it would best interest of the city to only review the documentation during the Civil Service Committee meetings. It was discovered in this discussion that that decision was made early in the email cycle, all right? The attorney nor anyone in the administration informed me of this decision, and it actually created a significant amount of work for me, which was okay. I mean, it's my job on the Civil Service Commission, all right? The city's charter, all right? When I read Article 5, Section 5.3, the city attorney, this is a little excerpt of it, "The city attorney shall act as legal advisor to the attorney for the city and all of its officers or employees in matters arising out of the performance of their official duties for the city," all right? The lack of communication to me really created a lot of work. It could have gone smoother had I been given some feedback. So my thoughts. The city's administration made a determination that it was acceptable to advise the attorney not to discuss the matter that was specifically requested by the Civil Service Commission, all right? Our Civil Service Commission can't function in the dark. The Civil Service Commission needs to be able to have full access to legal counsel when it or its members are operating in, under the official capacity. When we need advice, we need advice. Communication needs to flow freely between the Civil Service Commission and the city's administration, even if the correspondence or that communication is just to say, no, it's okay. Failure to respond to an email is not an acceptable form of communication. What I'd like to ask you is, how do I address this, since I was the person that was involved? How do I address it when I know that I've got to have that legal advice to get the right information, but yet I'm not getting it? So what, what, what am I allowed to ask for, for legal communication?
City manager, would you like to comment on this?
The attorney, Rob Eschenfeller, did provide Mr. Cantrell a response to that question. So he's allowed to ask questions, then it's up to the attorney whether the attorney wants to reply or not. I believe the attorney should reply to all and avoid a dialogue in order to avoid any sunshine violations, and really that's the purpose of this. So if Mr. Cantrell or any other Civil Service Commission members or Planning Commission members have question, legal questions, they are to be directed to the applicable attorney, and then it's up to the attorney whether they choose to respond to all or wait to respond during a meeting. It appears to me, and I mean, I could be wrong, but it sounded like Mr. Attorney Eschenfeller wanted to provide the response during the meeting and direct that any reviews or any discussions take place during the meeting to avoid a sunshine violation.
The communication I received during that meeting was specifically that he was, he received his advice from the city to not respond.
No?
Not from, not from, when, at the time that I've been here, because that's been my response, as I just explained, that if, even if the commission has any questions, you can reach out to the attorney, and then it's, the attorney will respond or will, or will explain what the next step will be.
I think the way to stop this in the future is possibly, give him two days. If he doesn't respond back in two days, I mean, we're paying for the service. Email the city manager and say, hey, our contracted vendor is not, is not posting, they're not doing their job by responding back to you in a timely manner.
Okay.
And that way, you got it in writing, it's documented.
I have six emails.
Okay.
It's documented that I requested it.
Okay.
At some point, did you get a response from the attorney saying that we'll discuss this at the meeting?
No, I did not, never. In the meeting, the attorney said it was his fault that I didn't receive a response. But the attorney specifically said there were three people in that meeting that decided I would not receive a response. It was three people, it wasn't just the attorney. That is recorded, it's in the meeting notes.
Okay, but let's move forward from here. Can we go forward with that methodology?
Absolutely want to move forward, yes.
Yep. Give him, give him two working days, not a weekend, two working days, no response. Get a hold of the city manager, hey, we got a problem with one of our vendors.
Understood.
Because he's our CAO.
That's, that's what I need. Thank you for the advice.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys' time.
Does anyone else have any public comment for items that are not on the agenda? Please come forward.
Tom Edwards, resident, protected address. You have a great segue here with the proclamation, and I was making inquiries, what's going on with the city gym being open to the public? So, you know, that was bought with city funds, and other cities have, have small gyms that are for their officials, for their employees and stuff like that, but they've also made provisions for the public to come in, and you can set a set of rules up, or you can have a camera in there to, people can be trained on how to use the equipment and sign a waiver of liability, that type thing. So I was just inquiring because I know there has been some discussion on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's two things I'll be bringing up in reference to recreation, is the Rock Park Memorial issue that's been ongoing for 60-plus days, but I'm going to bring that up on unfinished business, along with what you're talking about, that is 60 days also. But we're going to bring that up on unfinished business, unless Jay wants to come up and talk now. that is 60 days also. But we're going to bring that up on unfinished business unless Jay wants to come up and talk now.
Mayor, Commissioner, I was going to add that at the February 20th, excuse me, July 26th commission workshop, we will discuss the fitness center. We'll be bringing up suggestions and plans of what we, what, to get your input and the public's input as to what we believe may be an option for public usage.
Okay. July 20th?
Two weeks from today at the workshop.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other resident input on items that are not on the agenda? Please come up and talk to us. All right, then we shall move on. Next, we have the consent agenda, and from there, we have the approval of minutes from our previous meeting.
I would just like to thank Laura and Clara for the update on the minutes regarding caddies and the, and the Kitty Stewart Park. That excerpt is a clarification and did a great job. Other than that, I have no, no issues with the minutes.
Do we have someone who will make a motion to accept the minutes or other comment?
Well, we're expected to approve the consent agenda.
The consent agenda. Oh, completely correct.
So again, same way with the audit engagement letter. I don't, anyone have any comment on that? If not, then I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second that.
Thank you. City clerk, we call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner McGeehan?
Yes.
Mayor Rostek?
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have unfinished business, Resolution 2023-08, the FY 2023 budget amendment number two.
Resolution 2023-08, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year 2023, which is October 1, 2022 through September 30, 2023, by increasing appropriations for expenditures in the general fund, the local option sales tax fund, and the parking fund, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this? Commissioner comments?
Just in general, we went over this on the, in the Budget Committee, and I was explaining that much of this was moved from next year into this budget. And there was a need for the replacement of the Polaris earlier than expected. The parking fund service charges were exceeding what was budgeted, but that's because the parking revenue was exceeding what was budgeted. So that was, that was really a good thing. And the fund expenses on the recreation may need a little help on that one. But it was all discussed in length.
Yeah, absolutely. So give a quick synopsis, and you're 90% of the way there. So there was higher-than-anticipated cost of services, but those are also offset by higher, higher revenues. So you had the parking, the, the processing fees offset by parking revenues, and then on the recreation side, the promotions and public relations expenses for putting on events like the Seafood Fest, offset by the revenues that came in as a result of those events. And then the, the third one is in the lost fund, the local option sales tax fund, was just the, the need for that emergency purchase to replace that 2014 Polaris for the fire department. So that's increasing the budget to allow the city to do that in 2023. Inevitably, it would have been done in a future year, but based on the, the mechanical, the conclusion from the mechanic, it needed to be purchased right away, and you had already approved that emergency purchase as well. So three rather benign items, I would say.
Do we have any public comment on this? Commissioner comments?
Like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-08, fiscal year 2023 budget amendment number two.
Do we have a second? Please?
A second.
Thank you. City clerk, we call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner McGeehan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Mayor Rostek?
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
Okay, I know it's not on the agenda, but I'm putting it in under old or unfinished business. Where are we with the Rock Park Memorial takeover from the foundation? It's been greater than 60 days, and I just want to make sure that the residents that have purchased memorials that are unkept are kept in the loop with communication of what we're going to do.
They're kept in the loop right now by the foundation. We haven't met with them. We're going to schedule the meet, but since the park was developed, the foundation has been managing the, the acquisition, the communication with anybody purchasing a monument, the installation, the maintenance, all of it. It's only recently that due to some concerns that we're going to have, schedule that hopefully in the next month and see what we can come and do an agreement with the foundation.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. All right, we talked about the exercise equipment. That we're going to get an update on that. And then where are we with the letter to the Attorney General's office from the, city attorney in reference to the vote?
Attorney, interim attorney Trask stated he would be sending that out. I haven't received an update. We can ask him for an update and have that, email that to the five of you.
Okay, it just seems like that's being drug-ed for some reason. I mean, it just, in my mind, we're asking for a paragraph that states this is what we're asking for an opinion on, on this particular document, and it just...
I will follow up, but Mayor, I would suggest, or for the commission, that we do stick to the agenda. And then I think under commission comments, that any additional items can be brought up.
Okay, I'll take that under advisement. All right, actually, I'm going to, I'm going to carry on.
Excuse me?
My name is Mr. Mayor. I can update you on the inquiry you just made. I don't have a lot of information. I do know Mr. Trask was collecting information, and his expectation was to have that collected and the letter sent out next week.
Okay. All right, then there's one last thing. I'm just going to go ahead and get this out on the table, and we'll go from there. But I do appreciate the city manager's comment. The RFQ for city attorney appears to have been an epic fail. We ended up only two submittals back to us. I've got at least three dozen emails from citizens that want this to go back out on bid. How are we going to do that, and when are we going to discuss this?
We had scheduled at the, at the July 26th commission workshop to review. So at that time, unless you want to provide a different direction, we can put it out to bid again. Just so that you're aware, we do not solicit for any RFQs, any individual companies or individuals. I think that's not the right process to do. We can send it to professional organizations, such as what was suggested, send it to the Florida Bar. And we can certainly do that, but we issue RFQs, RFPs very similar to other cities. Posted on the website, we have had discussions, I'm, even discussions before I became the manager up here, that RFQs, RFPs would be issued. That's been discussed as part of our budget process. But if that's the desire, we can certainly issue it again, and we can contact the Florida Bar. But again, we, I feel very uncomfortable contacting individual firms to say, hey, would you like to put a bid? I think that's, from my perspective, somewhat unethical and could get us in trouble if you chose these 10 firms, but why not these 10 firms?
I know, I wasn't alluding to contact.
Well, that's what in some of the, I don't mean to interrupt, but that's in some of the emails, that can easily, that's what the request was. One of the emails had a list of all 24 municipalities and all the firms that they use. So, but we can certainly reach out to professional organizations directly. Any other suggestions, ideas, by all means, we can certainly do that.
Can I ask where, where the requests were posted? Where, how many?
As we have on our website and through another RFQ/RFP site called Demandstar that the city has used for several years. And again, it's been discussed at all these meetings that eventually there would be an RFQ/RFP, just as we have for information technology and engineering services.
Was it included in the, in your report, your, your weekly city manager's report?
Well, I only send that to the commission. It's not a public, I mean, if somebody wants to make a public request, but it's designed for my communication to the five of you.
Got it.
But if that's the, the desire of the commission, we can certainly start over and just delay that until, but we, it would go out for a minimum of an additional three weeks.
But in the end, we're going to talk about it at the workshop meeting?
We, I mean, yes.
Okay, that's fine then.
Yep.
Would you like to say something, sir?
Tom Edwards, protected address. I agree with the city manager. You probably should go out to a professional organization, but not just to the Florida Bar. The Florida Bar has also local ones, so you have the Pinellas, and you have the Hillsborough Bar Association. My only recommendation is maybe just to put out to them also. That's all.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to say something on this? Please come up. Thank you.
Jerry Mathis, Madeira Beach. I'll go with the protective address if I can. But it seems odd, if we've had an interim attorney for roughly two years, two-ish years, and we had the election back in the spring, how long is this, how long should this really take? I mean, if we need another week to get one paragraph out to the attorney general to say, hey, what, what did this really mean? Like, how long should this process take? Maybe I'm just expecting too much, but it seems like it's taking an awfully long time to get something done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment on this? All right, we're going to go ahead and move forward. Oh, please.
Are we having discussion on this now, or should we wait till the end? Because I have a comment.
We're talking about it now. Please comment.
Okay, so number one, I have been consistent in saying that when we post a job, whether it is a civil service commission, whether it is planning commission, and in this case, attorney, we've posted it, and only two firms applied for the job. Based on the emails that we received from the bullies in this town, I'm not surprised that there are not many other attorneys, firms, that do not want to come work here. The way that we harass the attorney we have, I have a point. On July 8th, I received an email along with all of you here on this commission from a resident trying to make a point that Mr. Trask did not do his job properly. This is in reference to, he informed us at our last meeting that one of the lawsuits that was pending had been dismissed. We are all aware that once a month, we receive a confidential report from the Trask Law Firm that gives us an update on every lawsuit that is going on within this city that the city is involved in. And I believe sometimes other lawsuits that are just generally within the city. However, we know what's going on, where the city's being sued. He's telling us that is not public record. It is not something that is ever discussed up here on the dais. It is confidential. So that resident who sent that email, I want everyone up here to recognize that that's a bully. That's a bully email. It's misinformation. Mr. Trask did his job. He told us that it could be appealed. What he was reporting was on the specific lawsuit that had been dismissed, period. Now, I'd also like to bring up that that email was sent on the Saturday after our meeting, so I had plenty of time to gather my thoughts, do my research, ask my questions. Today, we received a number of emails from the bullies in Madeira Beach, and they are bullying emails. They are emails telling us what to do. They are giving us misinformation. Often, if you research the information, you'd know that it was just downright not accurate at all.
Do you think we should be calling our residents bullies?
Yeah, I do.
Can we tone that down a little bit? Oh, okay. Thank you.
No, I do. I believe that they're bullying us. I believe I've been bullied. I don't think it's right. It's just not right. I'm not calling out any specific person, just saying in general, we have that. I don't like that. When I said I wanted to sit in this chair, I wanted to sit in this chair because I wanted us to be nice to each other. Today, I received six emails along with the four of you that were complaining about our city manager, or, excuse me, our attorney and the process of the RFQ. Only six. My point in that is, we have several residents that habitually email us on the day of a meeting. When I sat on the planning commission, they did the same thing. When you, and I think that they should email us, whatever it is a resident wants us to know, often I think it would be better served if they picked the phone up and call us, because a phone call would give us a chance to have some dialogue, but they email. When you email the commission the day of the meeting, there is not even sufficient time for the six of us, five of us, excuse me, to be able to research that information and even pretend to be able to talk about it here today, and we could, if it was a real concern.
Anything else?
So those are my thoughts. I do not believe we should go back out to bid for the attorney, and I will say that when we have it at the workshop. I believe that we did what was supposed to be done, and we only had two firms that wanted to come and work here. Those are the two firms we should be talking about.
All right, well, thank you. Anybody else like to comment?
I'll see my comments for the workshop.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next up, we have public hearings. We have ordinance 2023-15, Conference of Plan Activity Center Definition, Second Reading, and Public Hearing.
Ordinance 2023-15, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the City of Madeira Beach to establish a land use category for activity center, repealing ordinance 2022-03, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date thereof.
Ms. Rowland?
All right, thank you. Ordinance 2023-15 creates the Activity Center Future Land Use Category in the Madeira Beach Comprehensive Plan, which is consistent with the four Pinellas countywide rules. No specific property or location is associated with this text change. The amendment adds a category of use the community can use when updating its plan and map in the future. Adopting the Activity Center designation for a specific property or area requires a separate land use map amendment and the adoption of regulating policies for an activity center.
Do we have any resident comment on this? Commission comments?
Mayor, I do have some comments. The, oh, we do have.
Hi, Jerry Mathis again, Madeira Beach. My question is, if this is, if this were to be approved, then where comes the approval of saying what can be an activity center? Can anything in the city, by you all, just be at a meeting like this where there's nobody here, say, yeah, we, we're good with developing this and increasing the density to whatever level we choose to, because there are no people sitting here or nobody to vote on it. It's just a matter of whoever's in the room, and we say yea or nay. Because I wouldn't be in support of that. If this makes sense, maybe it makes sense, but to be able to arbitrarily increase the density of the city without the 4,400 or so residents have anything to say about it, I think would be wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other resident comment on this? Commissioner Taglerini?
I, I think I can address Mr. Mathis, Mathis's concerns. The first reading of this ordinance was on May 10th, when unfortunately, I had an unexpected absence. I regret that I wasn't there, but I did watch the discussion on this. And for clarity, I, I spoke to Linda Fisher, the senior planner of,
Pinellas Forward.
Pinellas Forward, Pinellas, sorry, I had a blank there. And on the phone this last week and via email to make sure that I understood what we're voting on. So Linda explained to me in the email, the city comprehensive plan has been inconsistent with the countywide plan since 2008. That is a fact. To remedy that fact, the city staff is proposing two actions. Amending the densities and intensities of most future land use categories to match the countywide plan, which will reduce some... the countywide plan, which will reduce some standards in most cases." That was proposed ordinance discussed on May 24th, and that is legally required by the county plan. This ordinance 2023-11, we discussed it on May 24th, as she said, at the workshop, and we voted and approved the changes during our June 14th regular meeting. The vote was five to zero, and at that point, we became compliant with the county comprehensive plan. Linda goes on to say, "For John's Pass, however, because there is significant development on the ground that exceeds what the countywide plan allows, the city has requested to adopt an activity center for that area, which would allow increased densities and intensities to accommodate what has already been built." That's the part that protects the existing structures from, from being, for being rebuilt after catastrophic damage. You understand what I'm saying? So that if it's all wiped out, we could build it back exactly as this is, because currently, uh, we wouldn't have been able to do that, right? But she goes on to say, "As well as additional densification," that's her word, "additional densification." The city is not required to, isn't required to request the Activity Center designation, and if they do, the countywide planning authority isn't required to approve the request. The request to adopt John's Pass Activity Center was actually submitted to us, this is Ms. Fisher talking, in January. However, we became aware at that point that due to a procedural snag at the state level, the city had not yet adopted the Activity Center category into its own comprehensive plan, which needs to happen first. That is what 2023-15 does. That's what we're, that's what's, that's what we're on right now. It's 2023-15. So some folks who are in favor of this ordinance have been heard to say that this isn't about approving the John's Pass Activity Center designation. But in fact, in fact, the only purpose of this ordinance is to allow for the John's Pass Activity Center designation to move forward. In an earlier email, Ms. Fisher confirmed, "You're correct that there are risks to allowing more density on the barrier islands due to the need for hurricane, evacuation, and shelter. So it would seem that there are safety and environmental issues with the increased densification as well." My problem with this ordinance is the additional densification that she mentioned in her first bullet point. If the Activity Center definition were to be limited to existing or lower densifications, I would be willing to support it. If our goal in adding this ordinance is to protect the character of John's Pass, I'm all in favor of that, of course, but how is adding densification going to accomplish this? A complaint that I hear from both sides of this argument are, "We don't want Madeira Beach to look like Clearwater." Well, we learned in an email recently from that there was a visitor profile study. I'm sure you all read that. It was very interesting. Who's coming to Florida? Who's visiting our beaches? In this visitor profile study, the Madeira Beach is third in line of the communities visited. I had no idea we were that popular.
Just for that one month?
April 21, 22, 23. It's a pretty busy month. I don't come out of my house if I can.
Just kidding, I come out.
Um, we're, we're third in line of communities visited, with St. Pete Beach being first and Clearwater Beach being second. We're only four percentage points behind Clearwater already. So to say we don't want to be like Clearwater Beach, too late. We practically are Clearwater Beach. So I'd like to give you what I consider to be a more catastrophic comparison. Coming south, imagine you're in Clearwater, okay? You just left Clearwater. Coming south over, from Clearwater Beach, you go over the Clearwater Pass via the Sand Key Bridge, and you'll be in Sand Key, or what I like to call the high-rise condominium canyon. Uh, when I was in high school, a long time ago, that was a two-lane bridge, and when you got over the bridge, you were in Florida wilderness. On the right, you had sand dunes and white sandy beaches, and on the left, you had mangroves and intracoastal. When, when I was in high school, we used to camp there. When you drive over that bridge now, you might even, not even know you're on a barrier island. Uh, you, you can't see water, you can't see sand dunes. At least on Clearwater Beach, there are a couple places where you can still see the sand and the water. It's, it's too late to say that we don't want to be like Clearwater Beach. We're practically there. What I don't want for us to become so densified that you can't even tell you're on a barrier island. I can barely turn left on Gulf Boulevard the other day, and this is our off-season. The heck with comparing ourselves to Clearwater Beach? I don't want to become Sand Key. So for this reason, I, I won't support any ordinance that includes quotes from Linda Fisher, "Additional densification of any part of the city." Any legitimate way of changing our ordinances so that we can rebuild the buildings that are there, the structures that are there, truly save the character and charm of John's Pass. But increasing the densification, to me, doesn't do that. Thank you. That's how I, that's, I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to say that in the first reading. Saying it now.
Vice Mayor?
Jenny, can you comment on the additional densities of the Activity Center, any Activity Center, whether it's the Activity Center here or there, and interpret what was written to Mr., Commissioner Taglerini?
So the creation of that Activity Center, the John's Pass Village Activity Center, is to protect what is already built. So we took into account of all the buildings down there. What is the intensity? What is the density? And so that is what the Activity Center does. It is protecting and accounting for what is there currently, and making sure that the, all of the properties there are not non-conforming.
And that's why the Activity Center designation was requested?
Yes, that is correct. And so to move the John's Pass Village Activity Center, it was approved through BOC through the first reading, and so it, it stopped because we do need that definition in our comprehensive plan. So that's, that's where we lie right now with that whole process. The county is waiting for us to adopt the Activity Center category and definition into our comprehensive plan.
So assuming this was to be approved this evening, and you had that tool, the Activity Center tool, the second piece of that is, comes down the road as far as restrictions and what's allowed and what's not allowed. Is that correct?
Yes. And then after, say if the John's Pass Village Activity Center moves forward, goes to the county, goes to the state, say if all of that is approved, that will still come to BOC for second reading. So then you'll see that again before you, you can adopt it at that time, or whatever the BOC feels is.
So if, if the Activity Center designation were to be rejected this evening, how would that impact?
Uh, we would not be able to move forward with the Activity Center application, and we would have to talk to Ford Pinellas on what we would need to do moving forward, and I'm sure discuss with the city manager on, on what we need to do.
And if we had catastrophic event, fire, storm, whatever, how would that impact rebuilding?
Uh, we do have the redevelopment plan, but that does not cover everything. Mostly commercial buildings are not able to rebuild with the floor area ratio that they have currently, even through the redevelopment process in our plan. So most of John's Pass Village would not be able to be rebuilt.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Jenny, just to clarify, 2023-11 lines up our, our comprehensive plan with the county. We're, we're in compliance at this point, correct?
No, we are not. So...
The one was 2020, because that's, I was reading Linda's email. That was...
I was, I don't have that ordinance in front of me. And, um, oh, 2023...
2023-11.
I believe that's the Comprehensive Plan Updates that Jerry Murphy, we worked with Jerry Murphy on, and that is updating our state requirements. But we also do have the inconsistencies with the intensities and densities with the alternative temporary lodging use standards. The meeting that we had on, that Saturday meeting, and we've had BOC workshops on, as well as going to planning commission discussions, on how our densities and intensities are by right are more, are larger than what the county allows by right. So that will be coming forward in a few months for you to review, but that we are still inconsistent with.
But the addition, this 23, 2023-15, that is not required by the county.
That is not required by the county.
We don't have to do that to become into compliance. And in, but, and in addition to solving the rebuild problem, it does add densification.
So we have this application...
Sorry, potential.
We have this application floating out. We can't move forward in any capacity without that definition. And that, just the definition tonight, that doesn't pertain to a specific land, but it would, would be the process to be able to move that.
Right. And the application you're speaking of is the John's Pass Activity Center designation?
Yes.
Just, uh, colleagues, I just want to let you know, I've had no, no one respond positively to that. Of the people that I've spoken to, I've shown you a couple of surveys that I've done, no one is in favor of that. So if the purpose of this is to make that happen, we don't need this. There has, I believe that there could be another way, there could be other ways to change our ordinances so that we save the character and let, allow the businesses to rebuild.
I would agree. Now, that being said, I'm not, I'm very supportive of giving Jenny the tools in her toolbox to get what need to be done. We have already started working with Jerry Murphy for design standards. We're, continue to work with Jenny's department for ordinances. She's been working to get her house in order with the county, which until recently, we were kind of going our own path. I have no idea why, but it's been going on for 15 years. It's not something that's recent. I think we're making some very good moves. Now, the gentleman that did come up and speak, I didn't get your name, I'm sorry, I think he's very misinformed. He thinks, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think that perception is out there. This gets approved, we can, they can do whatever they want. It's not true. We're, we've been having meetings for weeks, if not months, about we have to reduce our by-right standards. That's citywide. That includes John's Pass Village. That includes everywhere. The by-right standard is what you, you take your drawings and you take it to the permit department and you say, "This is, this is what I want to build," and there are no comments, there are no meetings, as long as you meet those by-right standards. This Activity Center designation has nothing to do with that. The bonus, what they're now calling bonus, that's a maximum density standard or height standard that you can get, if you can get public buy-in. That is the PD. That is when you create a plan and you say, "I want to build this structure," and it does not meet the by-right standards. It's either more units per acre, or the far value is larger, or whatever it is. And this is why, and they have to sell it to the community. They have to get a buy-in, and there's many public meetings that are required to do that. And then there's, and then there's, of course, your elected officials to vote in a first reading and a second reading and all that. I see no reason not to give more, the tools to Jenny and her department because of a fear and an unknown, you know, because of the, because of the boogeyman, the developer that's going to come in and put something there that, that we don't agree with. We need to make sure we get the information out, and the city manager's been working on that as far as getting the public information out. He's started a next-door campaign, not, not as a back-and-forth, but as a, notices of meetings, you know. Ever since I've been here, that's, that's what I've always been hearing. Well, why didn't somebody tell me? So, you know, the Facebook and, and, you know, with the website, we have to have a dialogue, but I don't see the fear of giving the tools that Jenny's asking for so that she can protect the businesses in John's Pass Village. I don't, I don't, I don't see, public comment will be in a minute, sir.
Okay, I'll wait.
Thank you.
Well, just, just for clarity, this is not the John's Pass Activity Center designation. That has been put on, on hold. We're not voting on that. But what we are voting on is so that that can happen. And do I, do I want to support the businesses and keep the character? Absolutely. I just don't want to do it this way. Simple as that. And it's nothing personal to Jenny. She's brilliant, of course. But I, I spoke to Linda a couple times on the phone. These are two separate things. Coming into compliance, setting the groundwork for John's Pass, for the Activity Center, it's two different things, not required. I think, I think we have to find another way.
All right, I'd like to jump in for just a second, then. I finally found it in the code, section 11096, rebuilding after catastrophic loss. Now, keep in mind, the comments were made that we need to do this to protect and be able to rebuild John's Pass. Not so fast. All right, let me, let me find the exact section. Okay, under commercial, under that section, number five, "Commercial may be rebuilt within the same footprint and having the same parking spaces available at the time of disaster, but would have to meet the FEMA regulations for elevated structures and floodproofing to the required height per the National Flood Rate Insurance Map for its commercial location." So what I'm reading in this paragraph is, "It could be rebuilt within the footprint. It would just have to be elevated." I see a gentleman shaking his head, but I'm reading it from the code right here. Good, bad, or indifferent. I mean, it's here, black and white.
That is correct, but it does not allow for the same intensity, for the same floor area ratio, and that is where we're inconsistent with the county.
Okay.
Would have to be much smaller?
It would have to be much smaller, that's correct.
Wait, 5,000 square foot retail? Would not be a 5,000 square foot retail.
With the county, it would have to be a floor area ratio 0.55, I believe. In John's Pass, I believe it's 1.2. I don't have it in front of me, though. And most of those buildings, with the traditional village, what you imagine with John's Pass Village...
Would be elevated.
Those are larger than that 0.55 floor area ratio. So yes, it could be in the same footprint in the parking requirements, but the floor area ratio, which is how we measure intensity, that could not, it would have to go back to what is allowed, which is not what is there currently.
Would that be higher or lower?
It would be lower.
Much lower.
So you would have a lot smaller buildings. So it would not look how it looks today.
Okay.
The majority of them also do not have parking, their own parking.
The property line in the, in the rear there on Pelican is, is funky.
And it's likely not even legal parking.
Yes.
Due to the width, due to the length of the right-of-way behind that section of the village. But most, again, very few businesses have their own parking. They can utilize city parking to meet the requirements, but it's just, again, it would, it would look significantly different.
And the parking requirements are 50% of what's required. So even the parking that you have, the parking requirements are pretty minimal down there as well.
So I think that what we're voting on tonight is the definition for Activity Center. I agree with Vice Mayor Kerr. I also appreciate Commissioner Taglerini's comments. I don't think any of us want to see John's Pass to be different than what it is. But I also think that we have to keep in mind that if all of the things that are out there that people believe, all of the fear that people believe it's going to be torn down and hotels built, and, none of that could be done without the commission approving it. And I don't, I can't even, I mean, I can't speak for who will sit here next year or the year after that, but I'd have a hard time believing that you could get a commission that would vote to let some developer tear down John's Pass and build some high-rise hotel. We talked at our last meeting about getting design standards that would make it so that the city would have dis- so that the city would have design standards that would keep us more in keeping. Um, I talked about how if the town center, if I had sat here then, I would have cared much more about the aesthetics of the building than the height. So, um, I think that we want, and Vice Mayor Kerr brought it up, you know, how do we move forward with getting design standards? And I agree, giving the definition, we're not voting to change anything. We're voting to give her the definition, and that definition might not be used at Johns Pass. Maybe it'd get used somewhere else in the Dewanee Plan. Not that we're using that, but it was what the city paid a great deal of money for. There were three areas that were called, I believe it defined them as ne- uh, neighborhood activity. It was the same idea to be an activity center. So I think a definition is a definition. It allows our planning department, that's highly educated professionals, to move forward and bring something to us. And then let's discuss that and understand it and maybe educate ourselves and the community on whatever that is.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just, I just want to say, I didn't go by the, the crazy emails. I spoke to Linda Fisher. I, I was, I viewed the meeting. I formed my opinion. So just to be clear, I, I, of course, I listen to, I read all the emails, but I called Linda Fisher herself. So this is right or wrong. This is based on, uh, there was another point I was going to make, but slipped out of my mind. Maybe I'll come back. I just, just wanted to say that. This isn't from emails. This is, most of what I read today was a quote from Ms. Fisher.
And I agree with Commissioner Brooks that no one up here wants to see Johns Pass Village torn down and rebuilt to mimic or make it look like Clearwater. I would have a hard time thinking that would even happen. So, um, that's my opinion also.
Sorry, if you don't mind, I just, I remembered the second thing I wanted to say. We could apply this, this definition to any part of the city, not just Johns Pass, but coincidentally, we have an application in for Johns Pass Village Activity Center designation. So it is pretty coincidental that, that they're happening at the same time. Just, just data. That is, that is a fact.
I'll allow resident input. Just keep in mind, we're, we're in a transitional phase that it's going to be a resident input first and then the commissioners. But go ahead, sir.
Okay, um, Mr. Kerr, you, you said that apparently this gentleman doesn't understand.
Point of order. Can I ask you, can I ask you, speaking mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bob Rick, 137th Avenue Circle.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, you said that this gentleman doesn't understand. Well, apparently, most of the city doesn't understand. You, you yourself held the meeting last year, um, which was very well attended by a lot of people that were dead set against any Activity Center. And in the meantime, nobody's really been educated onto what this all means. So the majority of the citizens, as Mr. Taglerini has, uh, spoke of, the people that have contacted him are dead set against this. Why are we passing something that the citizens don't understand? Why, why are we, why are we even moving forward with this, with all the pushback? And a, a, a lot of this, it, it gets down to lack of trust of this organization here. We've seen, not necessarily this year, but in past years with different people, things get pushed through that not everybody's in favor of. And matter of fact, many, most, most people are not in favor of, but it doesn't seem to matter what they, what they think as the residents of this city. So I, I challenge you to vote the way all the citizens asked you to vote last year when you held the meeting, which would be against any move, movement forward in this. And, um, I, if, if this needs to happen, let's educate the citizens first and then vote on it.
May I respond?
Thank you for your comments, sir.
My, my, my comment, and I, I believe the comment was that if you, if you pass this, they'll be able to do whatever they want. I know, um, that's not your exact comment, but that's not true. What we're voting on tonight is strictly a definition. The Johns Pass Village Activity Center, that's going to be, that's, that hasn't, this vote tonight has nothing to do with that. This is a, this is a strict definition. If, if we don't have the Activity Center definition, it doesn't mean that whoever has purchased land in Johns Pass Village can't come back and propose a PD. Is that correct?
No, I understand that. And I, and I'm not saying that this is, but this is paving the way for that in a way that most of the residents that have voiced their opinions on this are against all of this. So why are we pushing this through until we educate the, the residents, the voters that, that put you people in office?
And that's, and that's why we're having this discussion now. That's why hopefully people are watching it at home or will be watching it at home. This is an ongoing process. We, you have a vision of what you would like your city to be, what, more specifically, what you would like Johns Pass Village to be. So does the gentleman next to you and everyone in the room. To get there, we have to have these standards. We have to have the, the Activity Center designation so that we can approve or disapprove or, or manage what can be built.
But this whole Activity Center thing, it's a blanket thing for a whole area, which also expands Johns Pass out about another block and a half, uh, to the north. And this whole, the whole Activity Center thing, it's a blanket for this area. Why not, if we have a, a specific problem where we, where current businesses can't rebuild, why can't we get ordinances that specifically cover that and not blanket a whole area that's going to open things up for hotels? Or maybe exclude all the un, uh, undeveloped property from that? Exclude that all from this, uh, from these PDs?
Without the definition, that, that you're tying Jenny's hands from what's there now.
Well.
It has, it has nothing to do with the Johns Pass Activity Center discussion.
Well, once again, you, you have this thing that's been kicked around here in the city for a long time now, and none of the residents seem to have been convinced that this is a good thing. Why are we moving forward with it today? Why don't we get this thing straightened out and get the residents on board with it and then move it forward? As, as a taxpaying citizen, that's what I expect from my city council.
And I, and I appreciate your input. I truly do.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I address something the gentleman said? Jenny, is the Activity Center definition that we're voting on today, is that the only way to save the rebuilding of the buildings, of, of the Johns Pass Village? For instance, are there other ways to change ordinances so that they could, like, Mayor read something that came pretty close.
That 110 down 96.
Could we amend that to include, uh, the, the floor area ratio that you said is not included in that? I just, I'm just curious. He said, "Well, there must be another way to say the vote." Is there?
I understand. I would have to talk, we would have to talk to our attorney to see the legality of that redevelopment process. I know it's a little touchy. Uh, we would also have to talk to Ford Pinellas on, on the legality of the redevelopment process and if that's something that we can write into our code. I don't know, sitting up here right now, I haven't, um, discussed with our attorney about that, but that is something that we could look into.
Thank you. I mean, as, as, as I said, the, the only problem that I had with Linda's, Ms. Fisher's response was as well as additional densification. If we're just saving, saving the character, great. But what's that extra stuff for? It seems like we're solving a smaller problem with a very big hammer.
So then I have a question. I can appreciate that. So today, we're voting on a definition, period. That doesn't mean that we have to approve the Activity Center the way it was presented. We can make adjustments. That's where the education in the community and having the workshops and having the conversations, and I don't mean just the community education, I mean for us, and being able to make changes to what that planned Activity Center looks like. But if we don't approve a definition, we can't move forward with even talking about really approving something and taking into consideration exactly what you're saying. Let's, you know, whatever that may look like, I don't know, but we need the definition, correct, to be able to move forward with?
Yes.
But wouldn't a, wouldn't a yes vote on this, if this passes, wouldn't that be added to our comprehensive plan?
Yes, that would be added to our comprehensive plan.
But just as a definition, but it's just a definition in your definition, in your dictionary. It's a definition. It doesn't mean we have to use it.
It's in the future land use plan category.
Yes.
Correct? It's not a zoning change. It's not allowing any changes currently. Something that could be utilized, could be, could be utilized in the future.
But as soon as we're done with this, if we pass this, Ms. Fisher says, "And then we'll revisit the application for the Johns Pass Activity Center designation."
Correct.
But that doesn't mean that we have to.
You don't have to approve it.
Vote on that. We could change that. We could.
Or deny it.
We could deny it, and we could say, "Let's take it back to something." I mean, I don't know what we would do, but without a definition, it can't move forward to be presented for.
I, I hear you. I hear you. It's, it's not black or white. I see that there's gray area in here. But I, in, in good conscience, can't, can't support it if it's going, if there even leaves potential. Commissioner Kerr with respect, great respect, you're saying this isn't the Johns Pass Activity Center designation, but clearly, it's here so that that can happen. It's, it's not, it's, I think it's disingenuous to say that it has nothing to do with it. It's there for that.
I'm not saying it has nothing to do with it. If, if this were voted, if, if this were voted down, how would you designate, or could you designate, the Johns Pass Village as an entity that you could set designs standards to?
It'd be extremely difficult. Design standards usually come out within the Activity Centers through the Special Area Plan.
Right.
Which looks at the landscaping, looks at the sidewalks, looks at everything within that district, and then provides for design guidelines and design standards. That's really where you capture that, is within Activity Centers.
And that's, that's my understanding. So if you can designate an area, then you can set guidelines and restrictions or approvals or whatever, you can, you can have a comprehensive agreement on what that center, that Activity Center, that, that area, that zone will look like and function like. And I, I don't have a problem with that, and still be able to comply with local residents that are, that live nearby and have that input and figure out what we want. But at least we have a designation of where we're talking about.
For me, the problem is that when this comes back and some, and, and someone has bought a piece of land and wants to put something on it, it may be a different board. And that means they're going to look back and say, "Why the heck didn't Taglerini stop this back in 2023?"
It may be, it may be a different board. So instead of sitting here, we expect you to be sitting there and voicing your opinion.
If I'm not dead, I can assure you I will be.
So ladies and gentlemen, Jerry Mathis, again, please don't misconstrue what I was getting at. I have, oh, oh, I have support for businesses that have their Johns Pass or wherever here in our city. They've had it established for years. They've been doing business, whether it's within code or whatever. I, I get it. It is what it is. It should be able to be rebuilt if it gets wiped out. Hopefully, they won't throw a match on it and go, "Oh, they'll get burned down," you know, whatever. But, um, I completely support that from a business standpoint. My concern is the broad brush that says, "Oh, now we have this designation," and then there's nobody sitting here behind me in one of these meetings. And by the way, on the meeting, my wife stood in the, we've only been to two of these, uh, but we'll be here more often now. She signed up last time, uh, 28th of, uh, June in this room, I believe was the last meeting. And, um, the, the last meeting we were in, and she signed up to get emails about these meetings. She didn't get an email for this meeting. I didn't know the meeting was going on until I got one of those crazy emails today, and it said, "Hey, there's a meeting tonight discussing this very thing." So how many of the citizens that want to know about, I grant, I get it, we can go to the website and we can dig and dig and dig and dig and dig, and finally, maybe find the, the meeting we want to go to. But if it's a different board, you know, and it was like it was a few years ago where things were going a little differently, and there's no one that stands up and says, "Oh, wait a second here." You know, I don't think that's what the people want. How can we be assured that with this broad brush of saying, "Oh, it's an Activity Center. Oh, look, this is designated an Activity Center, now we're in business," right? That's part of my concern. So just to clarify.
And, and, and just.
Thank you.
Bear with me, please. And your thought processes, as soon as it's designated as an Activity Center, all the rules go away. That, that's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
That's not, that's not the intent.
Okay.
Of the definition. It's just designating an area.
Okay.
That's, that's all it is.
The reason I'm a little skeptical, recently I learned about the dog park thing. And I learned that we're looking at eight hu, somebody, this board, was discussing an $827,000 improvement to the dog park that's right across the street. If the land is already there, it's already fenced in, you know, there's a bench. It might need something, but $827,000, you could build a pretty decent house for $827,000.
It was, it was originally, it was presented one time.
Okay.
There's going to be many, many discussions about it. We've received a lot of feedback.
Right.
We've, we've, we've talked about it last meeting and talked about other priorities that we have.
Right.
Please come and be, be active as, as much as you can.
Here's my concern. How can, how can anybody sitting here think $827,000 for a dog park is a good idea? Right?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Can, can we stay back on topic?
Yeah, sorry. I'm just saying, that's where my concern comes in. When we put the broad brush of Activity Center and then in meetings that the public is not involved in, somebody approves, "Oh yeah, we're going to make this an Activity Center and build whatever." You know, I, well, I'm just a little skeptical, obviously.
Thank you. We have any other discussion on this between the commissioners?
Just to, just to comment on, uh, public involvement. Some of the public hearings are here during our meetings. And I think until recently, it may have seen, been seen as intimidating to come and speak at a public hearing. And so what I think, this is subjective, this is my opinion now. I think when people think of public hearings or town meetings or meet, they think of what Mr. Gomez had for the dog park, where people could come, it could be an open conversation, open dialogue. It's a little harder during a commissioner meeting or commissioner workshop to have that kind of energy. It's, it's better, I think, since, since Mayor Rostick has changed the, the rules of engagement here a little bit. So that's all. I just wanted to say, just to the, to residents listening as well, this is a public forum. This is what we consider a place to exchange ideas. And lately, it's been a lot better, I think, to be able to exchange ideas without intimidation, with, with more freedom.
And we certainly encourage residents, businesses, even visitors to attend all of them. They are all welcome to come here, and there are more opportunities, more meetings than we've had in the past and even had about 40, didn't take an actual roll, so I don't know the precise number, but there were about 40 people here Saturday for the breakfast with the city manager, so.
I was just going to say, let's go ahead and bring, the city manager and breakfast are fantastic. He'll talk about anything, you know? There's no agenda. So there's lots of opportunities to talk about things that are important to you. And, uh, Mr. Mathis, if you're not on it already, my, my emailing list is available to you if you'd like. I'll see you after the meeting. Yeah, okay, okay, gotcha.
I also want to say one thing. I do agree with the gentleman that had come to the podium and spoke about the, the residents of Madeira Beach. They do need to keep continually getting informed about the description of our Activity Center. And I, I do agree with you, sir, that, uh, that is a number one issue. And I believe a lot of people, a lot of the residents, um, really still haven't understood what an Activity Center is. And number one priority is that we need to really get out there and, and, and let our citizens know exactly what that is.
Okay, citizen comments closed. We're back to the commissioners. We're back to the commissioners. Do we wanna take this to a vote? Well, do we have a motion? Does someone wanna make a motion on?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-15 comprehensive plan activity center definition.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
City clerk, we call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
No.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Mayor Rostock?
No.
The motion carried three to two.
All right. Next up is contracts and agreements. We have letter A Alpha, ratify city, city's option to remain in Pinellas County CDBG cooperative agreement through fiscal years 24, 25, and 26. I'm assuming this is city manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and this was an item that we received from the county, apparently a few months ago, but it was, just came to my attention recently, if it was an overs, or, an oversight, but I do not recall seeing this back in March. The county's requesting that we either continue or opt out of participating in the Community Development Block Grant Program. For those who may or may not be familiar, or the Community Development Block Grant Program is designed to provide assistance for home repairs, home purchasing, and also social type of assistance. It's federal funds that are administered through the state down to cities and counties. There are income requirements for a considerable amount of the funding, but either, either way, the county wants a, us to make a selection. My suggestion is we continue with it. We could in the future receive grants or have folks apply. Again, I think we don't have very many that may qualify income-based. However, the program is available. The county did request an answer prior to this meeting, actually last week, so now I'm just asking to ratify the fact that we did choose, the decision to choose to stay in the program, as we have for many years. So really, no change, other than we're just continuing as we have been.
Okay, so resident comment first? We have any residents that wanna comment on this? Commission comments?
Sorry, Mayor, one, I, one final comment. I did ask in research, we have not had any participation in this in several years, and I think due mainly to kind of the economics of our, of our city, but it does, again, does not preclude us from the future, but we just have not had any activity in at least the last five years. But we will get with the county and see if there is anything that we could participate in.
Great. Commissioner comments?
I read it through. It seems a no-brainer, its, its potential for income budget, but I just wanna ask, is there any expense in, in, in doing this?
The, no, no direct, we do not, it's, we do not have to fund anything or provide any budget. The only, it would be staff time if, if the county said, hey, there's a grant available, would you like, I think the county would work
Right, right.
on the grant, but then we would have some staff time to provide the information, issue the grant, monitor, the county would help, and then the monitor. In, in a prior life, part of my job was to review the city's CDBG program when I was up north. Our CDBG program was about $4 million a year. So I'm very, very familiar with it. It, it would just be time.
Yeah, it seems, it seems obvious. Our, ratifying the option costs us nothing.
Correct.
So I, I, I think it seems obvious we should support this.
Do we have a motion on this?
I move that we ratify the city's option to remain in a PEC cooperative agreement.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
City clerk, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Mayor Rostock?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'm MIPA's new business. City manager, you have anything for us?
Just a reminder of, again, for, encourage folks to come to the meetings. The commission regular meeting is the second Wednesday of every month. Commission workshops are the fourth Wednesday of every month, and in two weeks from today, we will have a budget meeting or a budget workshop for the next fiscal year, 2024. That will begin at 4:00 PM here at the commission chambers, followed by the regular workshop at 6:00 PM, again, on Wednesday, July the 26th.
Thank you. All right, next item up is the agenda setting for our next workshop meeting on July 26th. Looks like we have a presentation from Sela Freedom, Raising Awareness to End Sex Trafficking, and this lady had, had come in here and spoken to me, and she was telling me a horror story that happened up in Clearwater Beach. It was, it was eye-opening, and she would like to come, so she's gonna speak to us, and we have, I guess, city manager, you should take this over.
Excuse me, Mayor, just in discussions, the planning commission has been discussing shade structures, so that'll be on the agenda. The clerk will bring the revision for the commission districts for the next election in March of '24. Again, discuss the RFQ for the city attorney. We will have two additional, in addition to what's listed here, discuss election campaign signage, some discussion on some potential options to election campaign signs, also to discuss frontier, formerly Verizon, phone lines throughout the city. And those are the only two additional items. I think the clerk may have other.
I do, I thought I had put it on there, but it's time for me to ask again each, because in order for, I need to ask if the commission would like a salary increase, and if you wanna be on the health insurance plan and all. So, because if it's, if an ordinance is adopted at least six months before the election, it can take effect as of that day. If it's, if you should choose to, and it's, I mean, it's not within the six months, it's more closer, then it would take effect the year after on Election Day. So that, so I had to bring it to you every year, and so you just decide whether or not you want a salary increase, or, you know, you wanna be on the health insurance plan 'cause you can, I mean.
So it necessarily impact us? It would impact the next
Right.
Yes. Yeah, I think under, I don't know, Nancy, under Florida statutes, I don't think you can give yourself
Right.
a raise, but, so it takes place
No.
Done by ordinance. It has to be done by ordinance.
Right, you have to go through the process to adopt the ordinance.
And it's not on the election, it's just that it's a salary ordinance. And through, over time, you know, they have adopted ordinances to do that. I just bring it up, and then I'm just letting you know when it takes, takes effect. If you adopt it within six months of the, at least within six months of the election, it'll take place the day of the next election. If not, it'll be the following.
And Mayor, Commissioner, I'm sorry, two addition, that is on our list, what the clerk, we do keep a running list of, of future agenda items. We do have two recreation items. One, to discuss an agreement with the Spring Games organization. The Spring Games is the organization that has been coordinating, operating, running the college baseball games out here that occur at the end of February and the first week and a half in March. But we have not had an agreement with them, so we would like to have an agreement, and we're going to bring one to discuss and review, so that this, and that would be for February, March of '24, when the, we're expecting hopefully 30 or so college softball teams to play. Just in case you're interested, over the last, I think it's been six years, Jay, or six years we've had games here? Somewhere along six years, we've had over 99, or 99 Division One college and university college softball teams play here. There are a total of 281 Division One softball programs throughout the country, so we've had 99 of those schools here, and Jay's gonna list all of them when he presents by memory off the top of his head. I'm just kidding. But I will, I will tell you, the two, the two ti, the, twice that I've been here for the games, it, it's super exciting just to see the families come and visit. Many of them, this is their first time here in Madeira Beach, and they love the venue. They're absolutely, they wish they could play here. A lot of the schools are colder climates. Last year, the northernmost school may have been Dartmouth College, out of the Ivy League in Hanover, New Hampshire, or maybe Central Michigan might be a little farther. Either way, they, or maybe Niagara. Anyway, a lot of schools from up north, and they just love to be here at the end of February, early March. And it does have quite a bit of an economic impact, the economic, as, as our visitors do year-round. I mean, last year, you know, over 3 million people came and visited Madeira Beach, and I know it's a lot of people, and we're a very small city. There's very little we can do to prevent that, but certainly, if the commission or any residents would like, we could do that, but I don't think that's a good idea. But we have to, how to have that balance between, as I've said, between our residents, businesses, and our, and our visitors. So we will bring that to you at the next workshop, and then also, as I said earlier, the fitness center, public usage, some ideas and suggestions that we have regarding that.
Robin, could we also get, previously, when we talked about Kitty Stewart Park and the owner adjacent, working with them on some landscaping, we talked about that, and there was a suggestion on wrapping the restroom to make it more attractive? Could we kinda talk about maybe if there's any update on what they found out we could do there?
Yes.
All right. RFQ 2023-08, we didn't touch base with that. I guess we're gonna talk about that.
Yeah, we'll bring it up, but that'll be a discussion.
Okay. All right. Next up is reports and correspondence, Board of Commissioners. Does anybody have anything?
Well, I would like to agree with Commissioner Brooks, real quick. I do also believe there are bullies, whether it's here at the podium or via email, and we know pretty much who they are, so we see you. And we had an ethics class today, it was a four-hour workshop, so one of the things that we looked over was the presiding officer can regulate comments to avoid disruptive comments or disruptive behavior. In the future, I would like to see that happen more often, to keep the negativity out of City Hall. Thank you.
City Attorney, you have anything for us?
I just have one
Oh.
one comment real quick.
I didn't see that.
That we need to, on the public comment section, I was called down this, on this when I was sitting out there, about stating your name and address for the record. I get that this is broadcast around the world, and the reluctance of people wanting to state their name and address. That said, it's right in the rules, as far as some having a protected address, which the mayor can speak to, when you're in the police or the fire, or you have, you know, reasons to have a protected address versus just wanting to protect. I would like a discussion on, I don't need to know where you live, I just need to know that you live in this city, and I'd like to know what district. So by stating resident and your district, or if you're out of the area, state so, or if you're representing an organization, state so, that you're, you, you're representing something or someone, if you're representing yourself, just let us know where you are. So I'd like it, like that discussion and an update on that. Thank you.
Interesting. Any other comments from the board?
So, Robin, can we can update, update that in our handbook, can't we? To update it, to say that when someone comes to the podium, they give their name and either address or district, so that it's one of our rules instead of just?
Yeah, I believe that was, Claire, that was adopted by resolution, or they're
It was, and then there it says that you can change it.
Well, you, yeah, you can change it
By resolution.
By resolution.
I think that's a great idea.
It's a good discussion, and then
Maybe we just need to put it on the agenda for the
Well, yeah, I, we'll add it for the workshop.
Perfect, thank you.
City manager? I don't, nothing else. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, for your support.
We have updated maps on, this is on the workshop meeting coming up, and you can compare it to ones you got last week, I mean, at the last previous meeting, and so these are the changes that came up, which will be explained at the workshop meeting. It was just a little bit of movement, not much. It didn't affect anybody sitting up here, or, you know, as far as redrawing the lanes, and the planning department had a big help in that, and we appreciate them, so.
Well, while we, while we have Claire's attention, so, when it comes to minute, minutes of the meetings, I love the new platform, it's very easy, but it seems like we get behind, is, is it possible that some of them aren't up there yet? Like, I had to call Laura to find out how a vote went for a meeting that had been over a month ago.
We meant to put the, the drafts up there. The draft should be up there, all the ones that's been approved, and then the draft should be up there. We're still working on those.
Oh, so it, does the draft come up before it's approved, and, and then we approve it, or?
No, we usually post the drafts on the website.
Right, right.
And you'll usually see planning drafts and hours, and
Okay.
We miss that, working with all the projects and the holiday, and we apologize for that.
I'm not complaining, I just wanted clarity. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other com? We're already done the public comment. I'll, I'll let you come up for just a minute.
Just on, just on that note, Jerry Mathis, 1, 420 137th Avenue Circle, Madeira Beach, I'm in District One, I believe, that's my name, just so, I didn't know that was the rules, so pardon me. But the, the point on, I've been told that all of the, all of these meetings for a long time have been on YouTube, so you can go to YouTube. Have you ever tried to look something up specifically on YouTube? Could you, could we maybe come up with a naming convention that would allow us to go, starting now, that this meeting will be named something, and then next week, when we go, or a month from now, or six months from now, when we go to look up a meeting, it will be in chronological order? Because they're all over the board. You can't, I don't know how you find anything on there.
My quick experience is if you subscribe to Madeira Beach, and then you, you click there, and then you hit videos, the most recent will pop up.
Gives you an order.
In order? At Madeira Beach somehow?
Or you can, you can go right to the website, to Madeira Beach website, to meetings, and you find the date of the meeting you wanna watch, and there's a video. You just
Yes.
click the video, and it'll pop up, and
Here, show that.
Yeah, here's on our, this is our website. This is the homepage, madeira beach FL.gov. This is what pops up when you type in the address. Just scroll down a little bit, and right here, meetings, agendas, minutes, and videos, and then they all pop up, and they're in chronological order, most recent to, all the way back to 2016, 17, 18?
If we're going back, we're continuously working to go back.
But all the agendas, and then the videos are on here as well, along with the minutes.
Yes, and also at the top right-hand corner that he's showing there, you can subscribe. And then once you click that button, you can click everything if you want, to what meetings you wanna be notified on.
Okay, thank you. Pardon my ignorance, but I had just not been able to find that. Sometimes when you're, when you're intimately familiar with the website, and you know how it works, and you can find stuff, it's super easy like that, but if you don't happen to know that, it could be a challenge. So thank you for your time.
I do encourage anybody who's ever gone to any city websites, they're very, very different than a lot of other websites, because even as small as Madeira Beach is, two miles long and a mile wide, about 3,850 residents per the 2020 U.S. Census, your best friend for any city website is the search function, because somebody may call Public Works, so they repair roads in other cities, they oversee your water and your sewer. We don't provide We don't provide water and sewer. If you don't know that, you'd have, you have to go to Pinellas County. Oh, I need the Madeira Beach Police Department. Well, there is no such thing. It's the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. So we're trying, and believe me, in almost 30 years I've been in local government in four cities, there is no perfect website out there for cities. The bigger the city, the bigger of a mess it is. So please bear with us and feel free to ask questions. Thank you.
Anything else before we adjourn? I'm going to say one thing as mayor and have the final word. I'm going to apologize for the disparaging comments of one of our commissioners from the last two meetings. Now we have a person calling our residents bullies. I humbly apologize for that. It's not going to happen again. If it does, I will ask the commissioner to exit the dais. I will not tolerate that anymore. Combined with, our residents also have to remain respectful. They're entitled to their opinions. They're our residents. They're not bullies. I humbly apologize. Time is 7:50 hours. Meeting is adjourned.